Take out the up till now?
Yeah.
Okay. Call the order, the special common council reorganization meeting Tuesday, April 16th, 6:08 PM. Roll call.
Ron, Issa.
Here.
Davis.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Radke.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
We don't know why Sarah's not here. Confirmation of appropriate meeting notice.
Meeting was noticed on Friday, April 12th. Agendas were posted at the post office, library and city hall.
Next item is pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is oaths of office. Well, you got a couple you can do.
You raise your right hand. Having been elected to the Office of City of Edgerton Alderperson on April 2nd, 2019, do you swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin, and will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office to the best of your ability, so help you God? If so, please respond, "I will."
I will.
Congratulations.
Oh. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, there we go.
Okay, now we are at the signing of the City of Edgerton Oath of Office book. Bad place to get down. Can't nobody read that one. Thank you. Okay. Next item is to elect council president. Any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Candy Davis.
I'll second.
Any other nominations? Any other nominations? And one more time, any other nominations? Okay. Motion in a second to nominate Candy as council president. Roll call.
Burdick.
Yes.
Radke.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Issa.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item is consider committee, commission.
Don't be gone. Just kidding.
Don't be gone.
Have a stellar year like you did last year.
Yeah. I don't think you missed one, or did you? No.
Kidding, I'm kidding.
I might not be here the sixth of May. I might have town all weekend.
Sarah just tried calling me, I missed, you want me to...
Yeah.
Or should we just keep going?
We got a couple seconds, see if, did she leave a message, or?
I just said, "Missed call," I, it came through and I didn't pick it up. What would you want me to do?
We'll try calling her again, we'll, we'll hold off for a couple seconds here. Now she's calling me.
Okay, hang up.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi. On your way here to the council meeting?
I thought it was at 7:00.
That's what we're kind of figuring, it's at 6:00. This one kind of throws everybody off, so we will, we will be here. Okay, thanks. Bye.
The front door is...
Recorded all that. She'll be here shortly, well.
We'll be done, hopefully.
Yeah. Okay. What'd you say about, when I went on to this next one, "Don't be gone," or? Is that what it was? Okay. Consider committee, commission and contractual appointments. Everybody should have got it corrected one last night with all the pages in it, I believe.
And then I, I had distributed a new one today with all the, um...
Okay.
Citizen appointments, with the dates updated.
The only one I have a question on is board of review. Did we want to put me as alternate and Jim Burdick as the alderperson, or? Do you have a preference, Mr. Burdick?
I do not.
Okay.
I'm good either way.
Well, if he has no preference...
If it's okay with you two, I'd, it's fine with me.
If you're okay with that, Jim, then just...
You're alternate?
I will be alternate, yeah.
When does a pet meet?
Fifteen.
Hardly ever.
Did you check?
No, I haven't. If it's a Wednesday.
Pretty soon.
If it's a Wednesday in the middle of May.
All right, let me make sure.
That's a fifteen.
Here. Oh, you have to check the thing.
If it's a sixteenth.
Well, we can find out later, or is that a problem?
Jim's not available, so.
He'll be back if it's a sixteen.
Well, then I'd be the alternate, so I would...
Yeah.
Oh, but you're wondering why change it if it's only for one, or? Okay.
So if Jim can't be here, if, if it's a sixteenth.
Yeah.
He's out of town, so.
So might as well leave it like it stands.
So we're saying to leave it then as it is, or what?
Oh, if it's the fifteenth, we'll leave it switched.
Okay. Got it.
And if it's a sixteen, you got it.
Okay.
Sixteenth, we'll have to put another alternate in.
That's like flipping a coin, isn't it?
Gosh, I hope I'm gonna be here.
That's what I mean, we'll have to put another alternate in just in case one of us other ones aren't here.
It's the fifteenth?
Yeah, Debbie.
Which means what, you will be here? Jim, the fifteenth?
Yes.
Okay.
That's a Wednesday? Okay. Thank you.
And you're here?
As far as I know. I'll make a point of it now.
There are two citizen vacancies, but there's more than enough interest to fill the Historical Preservation Commission one, there's a couple people looking for that now.
Good.
And then Housing Authority, if you know anybody that's retired or has mornings off, they could jump on that. And on the contractual appointments, the finance.
I can note that now if you'd like. The financial services, you'll note that it is indicated on this list as Robert W. Baird and Company.
Yeah.
Um, that is, Kevin Mullen has been our financial advisor for many years. Kevin has recently changed firms and is now at Robert W. Baird, and we're recommending that Kevin knows our history and has been a really outstanding asset to our, extension of our staff, so we recommend we move to Robert W. Baird with Kevin.
Who was it before?
Um, HS.
Okay.
Which is Shaki.
The Baird office, Milwaukee?
Um, Kevin will be out of the Milwaukee office, yeah.
Any other comments or questions or motions?
Were we putting councilperson on the tree board?
Yes, I was wondering about that.
Oh, we did discuss that.
We adopted that ordinance, yeah. So that, um, so it, you probably could do that, but the, we don't, we're, as most of you know, we're trying to work the tree ordinance through the process, and that, in that tree ordinance is the conversation and the recommendation that an alderperson be on the tree board. So it's your call, we just don't have that ordinance in place right now, so that's why we didn't put it on the list.
So once the ordinance is in place, does it have to wait until the next election, or would it be immediately?
No, you could make that appointment once it's...
We could make it now, couldn't we?
Yeah, there'd be no reason why.
There's nothing saying we can't put somebody on now. You know somebody that wants to be on it?
Just wondering.
What?
Actually, I'd rather be on that than utilities.
Can't even hear it out tonight. One change.
Catch her up down there?
I did.
When is the tree board made?
That's the only change so far.
When is the tree board made? Tuesdays? Um, middle of the month, it kind of varies, but early, 5:30 usually.
Just wait this minute, so you're official that you can vote.
Perfect.
Well, can we go back to the swearing in part now? Even if we're on this?
Actually, it's more of a ceremonial thing.
Okay.
If Sarah wants to, the ceremonial part, she's welcome to, or?
I think we shouldn't.
But she's fine with this, she's good.
Oh, we gotta have the sound.
Let me keep you guys, continue, okay? It's my fault, so I finished work late because I thought it was at 7:00.
Why don't we just finish up with the appointments and then do the oath?
And then the book signing too, for her.
And the book signing, yep.
So you're just climbing the tree to get on the tree board? No, you don't want to be in there?
You talking to me?
Yeah.
Nice try.
So you don't want to too bad, huh?
I'll think about it.
Okay. Well, for somebody that does want it... We could fill it now, but we don't have to, there'll come a day when we do have to, though, so. If you want us to wait out until we have to and you want to do it, then we can wait till then. If you want to do it, then.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the committee appointments.
I'll second.
Committee and commission and contractual, all of them, or?
Yes, all of them.
Okay.
Say your question too, Bill?
Yes, and I was gonna say, "As modified."
That's correct.
As modified, yes.
Ditto with my second.
Right.
As modified.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Olson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Radke.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Ron.
Yes.
Issa.
Yes.
Motion passes. Want to go back to the swearing in and the signing of the book?
Sure.
That's you, you get to go over, out there, right in front of everybody. Everybody.
Land on looking nice, huh?
Yes, for those of you who don't know, that maybe don't know, this, this is recorded here, video and audio, we're on camera.
Having been elected to the Office of City of Edgerton First District Alderperson on April 2nd, 2019, do you swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin, and will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office to the best of your ability, so help you God? If so, please respond, "I will."
I will.
Thank you. Oh, and they put it on that corner.
It's all good, I'm used to it, my whole life.
Next one is consider mayor's appointment of chairperson for zoning board of appeals. Dave Maynard's been doing that for the last few years now anyhow, so I think he's gotten better. So I will make that as my nomination.
He still wants to do it? You talked to him, he still wants to do it?
Well, I didn't talk to him. I talked to him last year when his term was up and he wanted to continue, but...
Okay. So was he chair this last year?
Yeah, he has been for quite a few years.
Good.
Probably five.
I don't know.
It's been a while. I can't remember who was even chair before him.
Well, I will second your motion.
Well, it's not a motion, that's...
Oh, I thought you said you motioned.
I'll move to accept your nomination.
I apologize. I, okay.
I can't make motions.
I'll move to accept your nomination.
I will second your movement.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Burdick.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Radke.
Yes.
Ron.
Yes.
Issa.
Yes.
Motion passes. Consider mayor's appointment to, of elected representative and citizen at large to joint review board. Now, last year Candy, you did that because I think I couldn't make it, but if you want to do that again, it's, it's one meeting unless we form another TIF somewhere along the line?
Sure.
Okay, I'll make Candy as the nomination for that and Warren Kucla as the citizen at large. Or should we do them separate in case you don't want one of them for the other?
From the motion.
I'll move to accept your nomination. Both?
Both.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Burdick.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Radke.
Yes.
Ron.
Yes.
Issa. David, or Olson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Well, the next item is to discuss and consider 2019 capital projects borrowing and approved capital improvement plan. I know we've got some background here.
And a couple of things at your place, too, a couple of charts if they're of assistance, we'll talk about those too. So on, in your packet, there's a brief staff report, kind of laying out what the borrowing is about, I'll just touch on the highlights and then we can talk about the projects. We have established, the council established several years ago, the debt service level that they wish to maintain, and they, at that time, they said we, they would try it for 10 years to see how that worked. So $600,000 is the annual debt service payment we have been making, and in an effort to maintain that, if that is the council's wish, it is now a time we borrow once every, on average, four years for projects. There's a strategy for that that is advantageous in many cases when we go to the bond market because the borrowing is sizable enough that we can consider going to the bond market. So, um, this year, we are, we're needing to borrow for capital projects for 2018 through 2021, the borrowing amount of $800,000 would maintain the devil, the, the level debt service payment of $600,000. The list of projects, which I'll skip to now, is on the next page, and I just wanted to go over those because there are some, I'll say, question marks or unknowns because of the Rollin' Street, Rollin' Street project, which you probably, most of you have heard about, we passed several items last, on last evening's agenda regarding that. So the list of projects that would be paid for by this borrowing is the pool painting, which is completed. Chaucer and Broadway is completed, although that number is still an estimate because we'll have the last lift of asphalt, so that number's pretty close, but not absolutely final. Sweeney is the road that's bidding right now, that's our street project for this 2019 year, that's a total street reconstruct. The Swift Street is a recons, a resurfacing of Swift Street from the bridge to North Main. The next two projects are both the Rollin' Street projects, and I won't go into a lot of detail, but for anyone who wishes to ask questions, who maybe isn't, hasn't been involved in all those conversations, there's two pieces to that Rollin' Street potential project. One is the piece from Swift Street to North Main, that's funded by a source of funds that is pretty known to us, it is a revolving loan fund, funds that will be converted into funds to reconstruct roads, that's all by the state is driving that. So that, we call that the CDBG Close Program, we'll try not to use too many of those things you have to keep track of, but, so that's the first piece. The second piece is from Rollin', excuse me, from Albion, from Albion Street to Swift Street. That section is the competitive grant that last night we passed several items for, that is an unknown as to whether we will get that project or get that funding. If we do, it will be a really great way to fund a really expensive project with almost entirely grant money. So that's why you'll see in the piece of the project, Rollin' from Swift to North Main, there's nothing budgeted for that because we have those funds available in, already in the CDBG Close revolving loan fund pool. The piece from Swift to Albion, our estimate right now is that is the piece of that entire project that the, someone will have to pay for locally. And I, when I say someone, the discussion will come in the future as to whether it is the, one of the utilities, whether it is the city, so that decision isn't, doesn't have to be made right now, but we have put the worst-case scenario in this, in this for you, so that $108,000, if it were all paid by the city, would be then allocated in this borrowing. The last project is Quigley Street, Quigley Street is a resurface project with sewer and water utilities under being replaced, that is a significant, significant portion of even the street of that is being paid for by the utilities because it's really driven by the, a utility reconstruct. So those total gives us a negative number, as you can see, so obviously we can't spend more than we have, but because of the unknown of the Rollin' Street projects, the decisions that you're making this evening really come back to, if you're interested in having that debt service at $600,000 and not have an increase in the taxes for people to pay for debt service for projects, then you would borrow $800,000, and as more information becomes available regarding the projects of Swift Street, Sweeney, the Rollin' Streets, Quigley, as all of that becomes available, you'll make all those decisions as to which ones we do and which ones we don't do. We just don't have, that's our, our best guess right now, not knowing how this will play out. Okay, so I guess with that, I'll stop with, that has been the, the direction of the council for several years, to maintain that $600,000 of debt service, and this is the, these are the projects that would fit into that.
Can I ask you a question, Ramona? The CDBG, the, the special grants that we're applying for, we would know quite soon, correct? If I remember, in May?
Here. It's due May?
Right.
Answer in July.
Okay.
So the other piece of that, not that it, I'll just put it out there so that you can keep it in, in mind, we have, the timing of the two programs, the public facility's a competitive one, is an annual thing.
Right.
So if we aren't successful this year, the, the CDBG Close piece has a timeline, but it has two years, so we would come back to you for your decision, and we would probably suggest that if we're unsuccessful in the competitive piece, that we wait another year and reapply and hold the other, the revolving loan fund, the Close piece money, because we don't, we have two years to deal with that. So I think we should, it's a, it's a significant grant because the local share is very, very small for the size of that project, and you don't find that very often because of these, the uniqueness of these two programs together, we have this kind of one-time ability to match those together and, and gain a whole bunch. So, so again, there are a whole bunch of things that we can't know right now, but you don't have to decide what projects you're doing right now, your decision is how much you wish to borrow and if you want to maintain that level debt service.
So, um, my question is, looking at this chart that you just went through, our $800,000 of borrowing, with that, we're still, are we over budget, are you saying, or under budget by 52, 570?
Over.
So even with the existing borrowing, we don't have enough to do these projects?
Right.
They all come at those costs.
Yeah, these numbers are very squishy.
Very squishy, right.
I, I wouldn't let that deter you because these numbers are so, you know, we're really, like, Quigley as an example, we haven't even designed yet, so we don't, we're, these are very rough.
A rough estimate.
And if the, the grant did come through, I mean, how, how large are we talking?
Well, the estimated project cost for just those blocks, over $900,000.
Okay, but this would be our portion, assuming that that...
That, this is the local portion, yes.
The local portion, thank you.
Because the ratio of the grant, as well as the ability to use that Close money to match the other one, it's very, very unusual we ever get these things to align, so there will be a lot of people vying for this, so it will be very competitive.
Sure.
So that's why I'm saying that if we don't get it this year, then we'll come back to you and then we'll talk about, okay, what do we do now, do you want to wait and reapply? And then we'll relook at the, the projects and the numbers and, you know, decide as we go along with each project, how we're gonna, how to spend the money.
Jim?
And I'd like to just throw something out there while I, while we're on this subject, and apologize, I'm gonna be reading from my phone because my printer wasn't working, so I'm not really on my phone, I'm reading it. While Edgerton is not a big city, is by no means a tiny bird, we cover over four square miles and we have a ton of paved streets, that's only because I didn't get the right number from you, but we got a ton of paved streets. Having said that, I would venture that most of you agree that, that's, we have a high amount of streets in this town that are in pretty bad shape. Having said that, uh, wait a minute, I already did that one, okay. The vast majority of the concerns that I get from residents obviously comes, or is the condition of our streets, and I'm gonna venture that most of you have already heard about that or are going to hear about it pretty soon, now that you're on. We also know that the cost to repair these streets is the worst, in the worst shape, are in need of repair, they're in need of repair, is quite excessive, as you just saw, since we were just on that subject. And it's no small amount, so what I'd like to propose to you, wouldn't do anything at all to move these projects ahead, these are the repairs that we have on here. And it's not gonna affect their timetable, what I believe that these streets are already, at best, just shot, again, they need extensive and expensive repairs. The reasons for this are debatable, but I'd like to assume that the reason's not because of overabundance of preventive maintenance. Edgerton budgets a certain amount a year for the, for the maintenance of our roads, or our streets, and I say, I would venture a guess that it doesn't barely keep up with the condition of these streets that, that we are, and that eventually they'd wear out anyway, and we're just throwing our money away. They get cost, they get worse and the streets, the costs get higher every year. People in town want something done with their streets, I hear it, and I'm sure some of you have or are going to. Again, I propose we give them something, hopefully more than a street or two or a past job here and there, for a year after year, countless years to come. What I'm gonna propose, may not be the most popular, but I believe if we sell, or promote this, we can sell it because it's something that the residents ask for and really want. I'd like to propose that we take a hard look at raising our borrowing by an amount that all of us can agree on and live with, and that we use that same amount for the dedicated preventive street maintenance, and only for the, that purpose, in, all in one year. And while we may not have a list of those streets right now, because I was working and work with Tom on that to find out, but we can get an idea of how many streets we can cover per set block amount of borrowing, 50,000, 100,000, whatnot, he can give us some kind of an idea how far ahead of these, this we can get. We can get a pretty good idea, okay. And that, oh, and I'm sorry, and that this, this expense right now would likely extend the life of these streets for years to come, and thus allowing us less extensive and less expensive repairs later on down the road. Again, I understand what I'm proposing may not be the best or most popular idea, especially since some of you... since some of you just recently had interviews with the papers that asked how you're gonna keep taxes in check. But I'd, hopefully, you guys would look at them and say, by spending a little bit now to save a lot later on, down, down the street, so to speak. These measures are not for today, but they're for years down the streets. Thanks for hearing me out. I think I skipped a paragraph, but that's okay. If it didn't make sense, ask me.
Question for Tom, if he has the answer. $100,000 of preventive maintenance, how much area can you cover, or a number that you might have?
Well...
Twice as much as 50,000, I didn't realize that.
Yeah. Um, to do a 400 by 30 seal coat street costs about 1,800, so that's roughly one block.
1,800, so if you had 180,000, you could do 100 blocks.
Yep.
Okay, this is where I should probably bring this up, then, about the TIF?
Yeah.
TIF one? TIF 5 out there, the Business Park, expenditure periods is done. We made some good investments over the years with that, and loaned money to that, and it's been successful. There will be, help me with the number if I'm off by a little bit, approximately $170,000 surplus coming back to the city this year after the bills are paid. And that would normally go into fund balance. We could take that, spend it on the street repairs, and not deal with moving it back and forth, and leave our borrowing at the $800,000 amount.
Could've saved me a good speech there.
I wanted to hear it. I know how hard you work to read it off there.
I know, right?
Preventative maintenance point you make, though, I think is not dissimilar from what the mayor's making the point, is if there's gonna be more money spent on roads, the best investment is, in fact, on preventative maintenance, not just moving one street up a year. So I think that, you know, you are on the same page with that.
So does, then you say TIF 5 closes at this year?
The expenditure was, was done when we did the two streets out there. We couldn't spend any more money. I don't know how much more we got to pay.
Two more years, it'll close, and is expected to close in 2020.
Okay.
But because the expenditure period is past, the TIF is kind of set and locked.
Right.
So it isn't an unknown, like an open TIF, where you would be more cautious about, assuming that there, that fund balance would be produced. It is, we can't spend any more money, so it really is a, a pretty solid number as to what will get paid back this year. And so that, you know, those funds would go back to fund balance, so...
Boy, that's a fabulous, fabulous thought.
And then, next year, we haven't, 2020, we have a payment yet, which, wouldn't there be a surplus then, or are we done with it then?
There, yeah, it'll, it'll, it'll produce a surplus again.
Okay.
So we can talk about that again next year, as to what will happen with those funds?
Sure. I'm sorry.
I don't, if you want to do a combination of that and spend more money, too, then we can stick a road on here, move a road up.
I have a few, yeah, a few more questions that maybe might help generate some more When we talk about additional borrowing, you talked about the bond market. What would an additional, say, $200,000 of borrowing do to our bonds?
It would, it would not affect the borrowing.
It wouldn't?
It would not. It, and our debts, our, the other, the question that we always look at is the, our debt level, the amount of debt we have, and we, we have low debt for a municipality of our size, so that is not an issue.
So that would not, okay.
And, and the, in this case, where the Bank of Edgerton is our source of funds, because it is, they've given us a rate that is very competitive with the bond market, and so timing-wise, that really makes the most sense for us to go to the Bank of Edgerton. So the question might be relevant in a year when we're doing a borrowing that's on the bubble, as to whether or not it's gonna be a local bank, or large enough to go to the bond market.
Yeah.
And in this case, because the best deal is to go to the local bank, it isn't as concerning. But if the bond market were two or three points less than a local bank, then you would want to make sure you borrowed, you aggregated your projects enough to borrow enough to go to the bond market, and that's why we've done what we've done.
Okay, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't hurt us?
No, no.
Okay? Because I know we're always, we're looking at that, too.
Always, yep. But we are, we're really fine with our debt level.
Good. And then, when was the last time we raised taxes in Edgerton?
For capital projects? 2014 was when the council raised it to this level, and then, with, with the, at that point, the objective of doing that for 10 years. At that point, we were around 520, 550, Cindy, do you recall what our debt service was before that? It was an increase to get to the, to get to 600,000.
I, I'm just wondering, what, what kind of, what difference did that make for...
A citizen?
A citizen, on their taxes.
$19.28 a year after 100,000.
No, I'm talking about the last time.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, I don't know what the tax rate was, I would have to go back and look at that.
Okay.
It would be in the neighborhood of, of what this is.
Okay. Okay, so 2014?
Yes, that's when it was increased.
Okay, and then my other question is, if we're talking preventative road, a street repair, is that something, Tom, your guys do, or we contract that out?
Contract.
Okay.
It's the crack filling and chip sealing.
Okay.
You see come through every year, there's crack filling that we do, and then every three years or so, you do chip seal?
Yeah, the last time we did seal coating was 15.
Okay, yep.
We did your street, Candy.
Right, yep. So with your scenario of $1,800 approximately for one block, what's your best guess, I mean, how many blocks do we need to take care of?
A lot.
Yeah.
But that doesn't count for the, the crack filling, right? So a crack filling is, well, how many streets do we get for the 15,000 we spend every year, about?
We did five streets last year in the parking lots. It's a dollar five a pound, which a pound of cars have cost.
Okay.
And we did $13,000 last year.
For the...
Crack filling.
Crack filling, and that was the five streets and one parking lot, for about 13,000. And I know these are just...
And one, two, three, four, four parking lots.
Four parking lots, okay. Okay, so clearly, and so that's, is that what you call preventative? Is crack sealing and, okay, and...
Yes.
It's crack sealing and surfacing, or what was crack sealing, or is it just crack sealing?
Seal coating.
Seal coating, thank you. Crack filling and seal coating. So if we had the surplus of $170,000, could the majority of the streets that need it get done with that money?
How much?
170,000-ish?
Yes, we can do a lot of streets.
Because my only concern with some of this, as we discussed, would be if we were to borrow, if we had taxes go up because of this, we're gonna hear people say, my street didn't get done, and my taxes went up. You know, we're gonna have some really, really valid concerns by some people, so...
And Ann's really gonna get it, because hers is one of the streets on the list.
Yeah, we...
It doesn't matter.
If we do it, we have to be smart with how we do it, and why we do it, and how we explain it, and what, you know, I almost can't see borrowing to do some and not all, I guess.
I would agree with you there. I think if you're gonna borrow more, the idea would be to do all of it. Because the idea is, if you, improving infrastructure like that would also be attractive to new residents and new businesses down the road, and so you're looking at it as a longer-term investment, so...
Absolutely.
But it sounds like we could do it with the surplus and the TIF.
Yeah, that's really your decision this evening, I think.
Right.
I mean, the details of how many and which streets is a layer of the onion for a Public Works Committee to debate, but I think tonight, if this alternative of using that repaid surplus is an alternative you wish to consider and not increase the borrowing, then that is the critical decision this evening. I wouldn't want to get bogged down in a street debate this evening.
I agree.
But I understand your point about being, and, and we should look, then, at a longer-term program, too.
Right.
What will this cover? What are your first streets that you would recommend? What does a longer-range plan look like?
And I, yeah, and I think it could be easily, easier to explain to somebody why not, I mean, let's say all streets didn't get done, without having to borrow for it. If we have to borrow for it, we better make damn sure all of the citizens who are paying for that on their tax bill feel that their street got repaired, and I don't think we can do that.
And I want to make one note, it's just so everybody knows, there are some streets that would be a horrible investment to crack fill and chip seal.
Yeah.
So know that once the street is dead and gone...
It has to be done, yeah.
You're not investing in that, and those streets are gonna have to take time, because they're immensely expensive to get to, and that's what we talked about earlier.
Correct.
So again, so as you talk with your constituents, don't promise that every street's gonna get, get fixed.
No.
Because with this, it won't.
No, and I'm just saying, it's an easier story to tell...
Yes.
If we don't have to borrow.
Yes, absolutely.
Is what I, I guess that's where I'm going.
Don't have to raise the taxes.
Raise the, yes, I'm sorry, raise the taxes. Sorry, sir.
No, I was just, I, I, I'm in agreement with you, and I think if it doesn't have the result that we want by the end of the year, we can also revisit it next year about borrowing more as well, so, I mean...
Is this every year, or we talk, like, every four years, right?
Borrowing?
Yeah.
If you're going to the bond market, for us, it's gonna be every four years.
Every four.
If you're borrowing locally, and, and what we would do is, we could look at it again, and we, we try not to do small borrowings, we try to aggregate everything, because there's efficiencies in that, but we could always look at that again, and we'll have TIF conversations, we could have those again next year, too. So, you know, I think that this is a, this opportunity will give us a very good idea of what we can do with those kinds of funds.
Yeah, good point.
And I always look at the projected debt schedule...
Right.
And see where it's gonna drop off, where we can borrow a larger pile and get some more work done, and not affect the taxes at all.
Yeah.
It is a ways out, before these big, bigger bars drop down, but...
So that's what Chris is pointing to, this one schedule that shows a level debt service, which is where we are at least talking about, and the dark bars at the bottom are existing debt...
Right.
Of, for buildings, and so you'll see in 2027, when those two building, building projects are paid off, there is almost a doubling of the amount of money that you spend annually available for capital projects. And if streets are your priority, then the cadence we're on right now would double at that point, and, you know, be able to fix really, the real comprehensive reconstruction stuff, you'd be able to do it at a faster rate, because you'll have available capacity, because you've paid that off.
Would, I don't know if this is, I don't want to get into a long debate about the streets, but would the crack fill and, and sealing be something for preventative maintenance that would last long enough to where that debt drops, or to where we have money to do major reconstruction if necessary?
I have the same question, more specifically. Would, would a certain street on your docket fail for inadequate preventative? It'd fall into the failed category?
Well, they fail faster without, absolutely. The investment you're making now is, in my opinion, in the prevent, in anything you read, it's not just my opinion, it's the experts in the field, the best investment you make is in, when a street is relatively young, you seal it. You seal it once or twice, you seal it, and then you get, you gain 10 or 15 years on the end.
That was my question, yeah. Would it get us to that point where the amount to where we have available opens up quite large?
Right, yeah, I, I mean, I don't think we'll probably get everything taken care of by 2027, it's already trashed. But the, you know, when you read anything in the magazines regarding public works investments, and, and spending money on fixing roads that are already broken is, and you're not, if you're not spending money on, on the stuff that you can, it's a way better investment to spend that dollar on preventative maintenance.
I just wish I had now a week ago. You what? I had your information. A week ago would've saved me all this research.
Well, Jim, I really liked what you brought.
Oh, no, no.
You, you put some good work into that, good thought.
I followed Ramona's and researched the preventive maintenance articles and things, and yeah, but now it's all moot, so I agree with using the TIF if that's the way we're gonna go, as opposed to borrowing and raising taxes.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm about to rest on my discussion, just scratch right off here.
I, yeah.
You've never seen more people in agreement.
Yeah.
Just out of curiosity.
In a short period of time.
Who would have known?
I like it.
Well, he threw in that $170,000 carrot, that helped a lot.
Well, it may not all be able to be for preventative, if we're still 52,000 short here on the projects.
But that's all dependent on what happens.
Right.
So I think what will, if, if this is the direction, and the Public Works Committee will begin, based on information Tom will bring to the committee, the conversation about, is it all this year? It may not all be this year, it may be spread over this year and next year, you know, there's all kinds of things, and we won't know these numbers, many of these numbers, on this schedule for a while, so we're, we'll have to make decisions as we go, and kind of keep it, as we always do, keep an eye on where we are.
Wow, yeah.
It would be great if we had a motion for, to move forward with the borrowing, so we can bring that for your next meeting, and then approving the capital improvement plan.
So, just if I can, it's 170?
Ish.
Ish? And no extra borrowing.
No additional, over 800,000.
800, is that what you're asking?
800 or 600? The 800 keeps us at the 600,000.
Right.
Right.
Leaving this chart in the dust, essentially.
Correct.
Yes, Tom, so does that help you or not help you with your question?
We're still behind, still trying to catch up.
Yep.
So...
I think you're always gonna be like that, won't you? For the most part.
Not once the state gas tax goes up, we'll be taking care of them.
Well, there you go, yeah. I'll make a, a motion to approve 2019 capital projects borrowing of 600,000, I'm sorry, 800,000, excuse me, and approve the capital improvement plan. Do we need to mention the TIF funds or not?
Yeah.
Okay, that's my motion.
I second. Ooh, everybody's a second.
Okay, there's seconds. Did you get one?
Yep. Jim's the closest, I can hear you first.
Yeah, he's on my good side, I can hear him.
We're on his bad side, girls.
That's why you put me down here, ladies.
Ladies, we're on his bad side. Okay, any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
Burdick?